Everyone, we're going to call this meeting to order. Today is Wednesday, May 28th. This is a special meeting of the town of Fort Myers Beach regarding the Fort Myers Beach Elementary School. All council members are present, including the town manager, town clerk, and town attorney. If you please rise for the wing version of the invocation by Vice Mayor Adal, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Yes, I was just notified five seconds ago that I will be giving the invocation this morning, so bear with me. Shall we bow our heads? Dear Heavenly Father, thank you that we can gather here this morning without any fear of repression or reprisal. Thank you that we live in a free country. We pray this morning for our beach school. We lift up the parents and students who've gone through an extraordinarily difficult time. We pray for you to comfort them and put a hedge of protection around them as they continue the journey of trying to to raise and educate their children in a safe and appropriate environment. We pray that we can find a path together with our friends at the Lee County School District. We pray that we'll find a path to save the beach school, do it in a way that honors you. And we pray that our thoughts and our comments this morning do nothing but bring honor and glory to you. And again, we just pray for you to help us find a path. And we pray that you'll bring everyone together to walk on that path so we can find a solution. We ask these things in your son's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next, it brings us to the approval of the final agenda. Are there any amendments to the final agenda?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I had a request from the parents of the ad hoc committee. They have a presentation this morning that I think will help inform the folks that are here, thankfully, for public comment and also to set a tone. And I would just ask that they could go first with their presentation, then have that be followed by public comment.
I have no objection. Is there any objection to that amendment?
None.
Okay, the other thing that I wanted to bring up is that under item seven, the moment of silence at the beach school, there will be no council discussion at that portion of the meeting. So don't expect to hear from any of us. We will just be there for the moment of silence. But we encourage you, if you choose to speak with the media afterwards, to please do so. But again, be respectful that we're trying to find a path to succession, not to be adversarial. Is there any other changes to the agenda? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Second.
Okay, got a motion by Council King, seconded by Council Safford. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed? Hearing no opposition, the motion carries unanimously. Next will be the presentation. Who's going to do the presentation for the...
We have four presenters. Jenny's going to go first.
Okay. Jenny, come on.
Good morning.
Good morning. I've never done this before.
That's all right. Just start by stating your name for the record.
Okay, my name is Jenny Tardif Paradiso. Born and raised here on Fort Myers Beach. My daughter goes to Beach Elementary. I'm the treasurer of the PTO, and I'm also on the ad hoc committee. Why are we here? We are here as the parents of the ad hoc committee to represent our children and our community, to educate and to inform, and to ask for your assistance in ensuring that the school district honors the ILA that is in place. Okay, I'm going to talk a little bit about the historical and current status. Okay, the first beach school was opened in 1937. It was held at the Mayhew Page Cottage. It opened with 27 first, second, and third graders. The building was still standing until it was unfortunately destroyed by Hurricane Ian. The second beach school was opened in 1938. It was a one-room schoolhouse for grades one through six. The parents got together... Oh, thank you. The parents got together and donated labor and the funds to turn the tool shed on the property into a lunchroom. This is also where in 1939, Fort Myers Beach got its first paper, the beach school news. This building was still in use as a Fort Myers Beach Women's Club until it was also destroyed by Ian. All right. The third and current school was purchased in 1944, and it opened in 1949. It was one of the first schools in our area to be modernized. In '47, the parents and the community came together and raised $20,000 in nine months for the school to be air-conditioned before it opened. In the '60s, she was touted as being the strongest building in Lee County when she survived Hurricane Donna. The district and the community came together to get her back up and running. In the '70s, she was one of the first schools to introduce kindergarten into Lee County, mainly because we had enough room, and the PTA got together and funded all the necessities for it. In the late '80s and the early '90s, she had a marine science center located in the fifth grade, thanks to a partnership with the Ostago Bay Foundation. I know this because I was one of the lucky ones to be in that classroom. Just imagine if they would have kept it open. It would be pretty amazing to this day. Okay, so the building was added to the U.S. National Register of Historic Places in '99. The architect was James A. Stripling, who's pretty famous around here. He was pretty famous in the '40s and '50s. His signature style, you could see when you walk into the school, it's the archway. I believe there's another one at Fort Myers. All right, Beach Elementary has consistently been a grade A school. It's also been designated as a school of excellence, according to the Florida Department of Education, for the top K through five in the district. Imagine these kids, the teachers and staff, riding this roller coaster that's been the last five years, all the while maintaining the tradition of excellence that Beach Elementary is known for. This is due not only to our low student-to-teacher ratio, everyone talks about, but also our steam focus and the strong partnerships within our community, such as FGCU, Mound House, and Lover's Key. They're all creating these unique opportunities that can't be found anywhere else, not to mention the support of the many nonprofits here on the island. These key features are a big part of what's going to attract others so we can keep increasing our enrollment and decrease our costs. We have shown significant growth and a reduction in costs in just seven months on campus. And mind you, that's five months when we got to go back in December. That's five months and one year, and then two months in this current year, and that's it. It's pretty impressive. We just need to get our school reopened so we can keep growing these programs and keep inspiring the kids from all over the county.
Jenny, do you take questions?
Yes.
I just wanted to ask you kind of, because you're giving a historical overview. The mayor and I have been on the council for two and a half years prior to Hurricane Ian. We were never once contacted by the Lee County School District with respect to concerns about cost per student, enrollment, et cetera. Do you know of any formal initiative to the town of Fort Myers Beach that the mayor and I... Correct me if I'm wrong, yeah. We never were contacted in any capacity by the Lee County School District with any concerns until the tragedy of Ian hit.
Correct. And then when we actually started looking farther into it, we found out, so that's almost three years ago, for six years prior to that, they were actually turning kids away. They were telling them they couldn't come here, even though there was a program in place where they could. They didn't need a waiver, they could just come in, and they were still turning people away. As of three years ago, one of our teachers had to actually screenshot an email and send it to them because it was still happening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Not as short as Jenny. Good morning. My name is John Cass. I'm a local. I'm a business owner, and I'm on the ad hoc committee. My part of the presentation is going to be to give you a brief synopsis of the ILA, the inter-local agreement that you guys, the town, signed with the district some years ago. I'll preface it by saying that we currently have a new administration, a new town manager, just as well as them. They had an election last year. So the current staff that we're discussing with this ILA is not the staff that we negotiated with. And we feel like it's important to go back and educate everybody on what's in that ILA and the strides that we've made to hold up our end of it. Quick synopsis of the agreement. The agreement was a negotiated process that had timelines and benchmarks that we had to meet. And I'll briefly go over some of them, but the important thing, if we did not meet our milestones and those benchmarks, that over time, then we would have to make the decision as a town to either supplement our cost per student or we would have to go charter school. As part of that agreement, the district had agreed essentially for the next couple of years during the course of this agreement, it's a bad word, but I'll use subsidized, that they were going to pay for the additional cost per student. Okay, so in our negotiation, everything ended up coming down to the cost per student, which back then, when Dr. Bernier was around, it was a pretty simple formula. We added up all of our teachers and the staff at the school, and we divided that by the amount of kids that we had. And then we came up with a number. Back then, we were roughly just under 22,000 per student, while the rest of the district was down at 9,000. The two other barrier schools, which are the schools that we were told that we needed to get in line with, were Sanibel and Pine Island. Respectively, they were 12,000 and 14,000 per student. We were 22, so we were a bit above them. Also in this agreement, when we started talking about construction, and this is important because there's been some misunderstanding at their level. So our building is historical. Well, that created a bunch of agitation after Ian because they were having a hard time communicating with the national historic people. And they weren't exactly sure of the timeline. They knew it was a must fund, so with or without us, that they were going to have to renovate that building and bring it back. They were concerned that it was going to take so long that it may be a year or two before we get our kids back on that island, back on this island. So they approached us and asked us, well, laid out a scenario to us that they would renovate that separately. Like I said, it was a must fund. But then they would provide us portable trailers so we could get our kids back in a couple of months. We would have our kids back on the island. We discussed it as a town, and we went back and talked to them and found out what shortfalls would be in that historical building after it was renovated that would prohibit us from having a full-time functional school there. And the main thing was the cafeteria, and then there was some ancillary space that they felt like was needed for the school. So we said, instead of wasting money on portable trailers, and we appreciate you guys trying to get our kids back as soon as possible, we will come together as a town and we'll have to be okay with our kids being shipped off the island for some time. Why don't you take that money that you're going to put on portable trailers? Why don't you build us some brick-and-mortar facilities elevated that would then make our school whole at the end? So then we would get the historical building, which was a must fund anyway, and we would get the cafeteria and some other facilities. That is the agreement that they approved. The budget for those additional facilities was around $6 million. It was the exact budget that they were going to spend on the portable trailers.
John, if I could, that's $6 million, and that cafeteria, the concept of the cafeteria is reflected in the inter-local agreement. Is that correct?
Yes.
And it's also, it's a four-year inter-local agreement.
Yes, it was. Hopefully, it'll be longer now, but yes.
Could be longer, given the fact that the school's been closed. Certainly could be extended and should be. My question is, at the most recent ad hoc committee meeting, you had inquired about, when you heard that $6 million, when you referred to the $6 million number for the trailers, the fact that the parents made tremendous sacrifices to save the school district money, $6 million. First of all, a number of people in the room were not aware of that. And second of all, that also matched up with one of their five options that they presented in terms of building us a new school. Can you talk a little bit about what that option and what that option cost? And the fact that the savings on the trailer basically covers the cost of that option?
So it was a little confusing when they presented it, just because the numbers were the same. So we backed them up and asked them to explain in detail. Their course of action five, I believe it was, basically said, build a new school for $6 million. And I had thought when that first came out that that was the cafeteria. Turns out, it wasn't. They said that that's how much it would cost to build a new classroom facility, one that would just replace the historical building. So then I had asked them if they had done any due diligence to where, if they were going to build a classroom for $6 million, a classroom facility, that I believe was already in our budget. And this is in their capital budget this year. It's been approved, that $6 million, it's in there, so they acknowledge that that's in there.
For the cafeteria.
Just for the cafeteria. But if they were saying that it's $6 million to build an elevated school with classrooms, how much additional would it be just to add the cafeteria to that $6 million building? Is it $7 million? Is it, you know, what is it? I had asked them if they had done that research. And then they had said that the report that they're looking into with their contractor is still ongoing, but they would take a look at that necessity.
Thank you.
Okay. I'd like to fast forward from the... Any questions on the ILA? Have everybody understood what the ILA was about?
I just want to reemphasize that it is a four-year agreement.
Yes, sir.
And so if any substantive changes are made outside the ILA, the ILA will either need to be changed, or it would be considered a violation of the inter-local agreement. Is that a fair characterization?
That's our understanding.
Yep. Obviously, our attorney will opine on that later. But I just, I think it's important for people to understand, it's four years. It's not, four years didn't begin when Hurricane Ian. It's four years after the ILA was signed.
Right, and understand that some of the frustration that I'll get to a little later, it revolves around that cafeteria right now because that cafeteria had a hard date in it. And that cafeteria was supposed to be broken ground by the end of this school year. When we met with them last year, they had told us it was designed, it was ready for procurement, it was going to be awarded this spring. When that seemed to come off the table to us, it started raising some concerns. Because the other stuff, as Mr. Adal said, we have four years to negotiate, to figure out the cost per student. But that was, for us, kind of the hard line in the sand this year, to where this was supposed to be built. It's not being built, and we wanted to know why. And we've had a hard time getting any hints on it.
John, they guaranteed the building of that cafeteria at an in-person ad hoc committee meeting, ironically, at the Fort Myers Beach Beach School.
Yep.
Because we were all there. It was very friendly. They were very proud of that.
Yep.
And that seems to have disappeared from the table, even though it's in the inter-local agreement. That's a matter of great importance and confusion.
In the most recent discussion that we've had with them, I believe what they were saying was the reason why they didn't award it is because the plan could change. Does it make sense to build a cafeteria? Maybe the board members would want us to do something else, which sounds logical. But on our end, we said, as long as it's not changing to go away. You know, if that's the change, then, you know, then I'll let that go. Okay, I want to fast forward to the day before Milton, okay?
John, just before you move on back to the... Because I haven't been, none of us other than Vice Mayor Adal have been at the ad hoc committee. So I'm trying to better understand the numbers and how... I know you and I have spoken about this, how Dr. Bernier calculated the cost per student.
I got a slide to get into that.
So when we get to that, then I'll ask my question.
I have one quick question, John. When you say day, is it the school board staff?
So we only communicate with the school board staff. Part of our frustration is right now that we were blocked a little bit from meeting with the school board members. We feel like that block has been lifted, so I think we can meet with them individually now. But last two weeks ago, we had received an email from one of the board members essentially saying that they've been advised by legal that the superintendent handles the day-to-day operations of the school, not the board members, so they were not to meet with us to talk about any of this stuff. We brought that up in our most recent ad hoc, and it seems like there may have been some miscommunication between legal and there, but it seems like that we're now going to be able to talk to some board members directly.
Okay, thank you.
Imagine that, getting to talk to an elected representative.
Exactly. And I'll get to the numbers in a second. I just want to highlight where we were the day before Milton hit, because I think it's important. Although we only had, although we had a four-year deal with them, I think it's important to show where we were in year, in month seven, okay? Some of the programs that Jenny had mentioned, our Wooder School and our STEM program, Mound House, Lover's Key, they were in their infancy, but we were starting to generate some fruit from them. Our town, you guys, you know, our after-school program that we have there that was part of our ILA is amazing. You know, it's definitely the cheapest in the area, and it gives our parents a lot of flexibility. And not more importantly, but just as important, it will give our future workforce a lot of flexibility to potentially live off this island to where they can drop their kids off early, they can pick them up late after their shift, and they'll be taken care of real well. Working with the district, we expanded our boundaries. Essentially, now our boundary goes out to Summerlin, before it did not. We got put into the school choice program, which prior to the, you know, prior to the ILA, you needed a waiver to come to the island. Now, anybody in the county can choose to send their kids to Fort Myers Beach. It doesn't matter where they live. They don't need a waiver. They can choose to send their kids there, which we think in the future will pay fruit because, as Jenny explained, our school's amazing, and our scores are amazing. And it's almost like sending your kid to a private school for free. So, you know, we think that's going to pay fruit in the future. As part of what Mr. Vanessa's going to speak out, we wanted to talk about the outreach that we're having to our potential developers and our current businesses on the island to try to give them a path to work with their employees to get more children coming to our school from their parents that might not live on this island but work on the island, which has always been a mainstay of this island and that school. We've always had workers' kids that go to our school. The other thing, and I'll talk about this more later, that we were at the day before Milton, was an enrollment increase. When Ian hit, we were at 49 kids. Pat's going to speak a little bit more about their demographer, but their demographer said that this year we'd be at 50 kids. Our high point was 72, and we only had one resort open. A reduction in teacher staff. Our teachers are incredible, incredible teachers, and they're doing a lot more with a lot less right now. We reduced our staff, our student costs, I'll talk about it a little more in detail, by between $500,000 and $600,000. And it doesn't sound like a lot when your budget's $3 billion, but when you start out at $1.6 million and you reduce it by $500,000,000, it's a significant savings.
When you say your budget, you mean the Lee County School District's overall budget's $3 billion?
Yes, $2.9 billion as of yesterday.
But the Fort Myers Beach Schools budget was...
Right now, it's... As I stated earlier, they're doing their numbers differently now. Our teacher and staff budget is around $950,000.
But you're saying that there was a reduction as a result of the inter-local agreement of $500,000?
Significant reduction.
Thank you.
Okay, I want to...
John, do you believe that reduction was in response to the efforts of the town agreeing to do what it takes to bring those numbers back into closer reality?
It was a collaborative effort. Ms. Kohler, who's now on your staff, was the principal back then. And I think through the district and great efforts by her, they took a look at it and said, okay, we know we have a reduced amount of students, so how can we right-size our staff a little more? We don't need a staff for 100 or 150 kids if we've only got 60 to 80 kids. And they started looking for efficiencies within the staff. They started looking for positions that may be able to be handled by two teachers or by one teacher instead of two teachers. And that's where that generatings came from. I actually finally got the district to give me a sheet that actually shows everybody. This was just last Wednesday. I've been asking for a year and a half, but it actually shows that breakdown. I didn't want to share that as a whole because it's got personal information in it, what people make or whatnot. But I did highlight on, or did put on this slide, the highlights at the bottom. And if you see going across, you know, there are six categories in there, six boxes. The fourth box, which at the bottom totals $22,158, that's where we were by their calculations the year Ian hit, when we were negotiating with Dr. Bernier, per student. And it was a simple, their overall cost divided by the kids, and we got there. This year, now with their current numbers, is the last slide. If we divide that by the 60 kids that we currently have, that brings us down to $15,414 per student. Like I said, we were trying to get in range with Sanibel and Pine Island. They were 12 and 14. And an extra note to this is, the day before Milton hit, we had 72 kids in that school.
And what would that cost per student have been?
That would be $13,271. So the day before Milton, we were pretty close to being in line with this agreement, the way that I see the agreement. As I said, they're looking at student costs in a different way now. They're adding some indirect costs from the county and saying, these are costs to run a school. But we're still working with them to understand and to, you know, to get to what the spirit of this agreement was. And, you know, we don't agree with some of the other numbers they put out. We believe that this is the number that that ILA was about and that we're getting there.
John, just to simplify that further, how many employees? What was, what were the number of employees that were let go as a result of trying to find economies?
So I would say that roughly, we probably lost... It's hard just to break it to employees because now sometimes we have one employee doing multiple jobs. But I would say probably 30 to 35% in staff. Essentially, we have some teachers now teaching two grades. Like our kindergarten teacher also teaches first grade. You know, our fourth and fifth graders are split up. They do get two teachers between them. And then a bunch of the support staff that they had, the teachers assistants and stuff, and then some of the ancillary stuff, like your bookkeeper, your accounting. You know, we didn't need a full-time bookkeeper or a full-time accounting. So maybe we have that person for one day a week instead of five days a week, and we share them with other schools.
So staff was cut roughly 35%?
Yeah, we went from... We went from 1,447,000 to 955,000. So that's just under $500,000, $4.90, you know, in a 1.5. So it's pretty close to 30, 35% reduction. We do believe, not to speak for the teachers, but we do believe we're operating in a bare-bones staff right now. But as Jenny said, our numbers came back and our kids are still, I believe, these guys could correct me if I'm wrong, I believe we came back as the top-rated K through five elementary school in the entire county this year when our scores came back. So this has been two or three years.
John, do you know, was that staff let go, or were they were just shifted to other jobs in the district?
So it's hard for us to tell. There is a couple of the members that, well, one specifically, that was on the last staff that is now on this staff. The rest of the people that we deal with are all new faces to us. When I bring up to some of them that they weren't here, some of them say that they were here, but... When I bring up to some of them that they weren't here, some of them say that they were here, but you know, we're not sure. Um, and I don't like to discuss the, the, the personal or the private conversations that I've had with them in the ad hoc. But I will tell you, from the new staff, from the first minute that they came to the island, it was to look at our library. When we were trying to push them to see if we could put our kids in that library. The very first thing that they brought up to me was, we need to figure out if the school is viable. And my response was, no, no, we don't need to figure that out. We have an ILA in place, we're meeting to it. But it, it just seemed like that's been the message the entire time. So I, I would believe that this is the new staff. That's generating it from somewhere. That's just my opinion, but you know, but that's how the process is going.
I was just curious as whether they're still on the payroll, working somewhere else, because that'd still be a cost to the district.
Right.
You have to come up, you're going to speak, John Monica, you gotta come up.
Sure, that's fine. Thanks Monica.
Hold on Monica, you had to get up to the, everyone's got to hear what you're saying.
My name is Monica Schmucker. I'm also on the ad hoc committee and, and um, just to answer your question, Mr. King. Um, there's at least one that went into the private sector, but a majority of them then went on to other schools. And, and other locations that are still within the district.
So those costs are still being absorbed by the district?
Yeah, those, those costs are, but there were needs in other places. So for example, you know, the bookkeeper. Um, there was another school that needed to share a bookkeeper, so um, they, you know, we were splitting it with them. While uh, one of them retired, one of them went into the private sector and the others, you know, went to other schools where there was need. Because there's also a lot of need for, for teachers and staff within the district.
Thank you.
John, before you move on from the, the, the number calculation part, is it your belief or the ad hoc committee's belief that? The number, how they're calculating the cost per student now is different than what it was?
Definitely different and we, we are at the ad hoc community kind of waging that battle now. And the numbers that I just shared with you on this slide, we just got from them Wednesday. That was through probably a fourteen month effort of, of, of trying to get back to this number.
And what is the number that they're saying now is the cost per student? I don't have the sheet from you, just give it to me.
Going into the meeting on Monday, they showed us a sheet that I believe had us at twenty four thousand per student. I believe that was the number, but one of my people could correct me.
That was from last year, not this current.
Well, that was Monday. Wednesday, they came and gave us this spreadsheet and then that twenty four thousand number isn't on there anymore. There is a little disclaimer they put at the bottom of the sheet that said, this only covers the things I told you can cover. Staff and you know, um, some supplies and stuff, but this does not uh, include the indirect county costs. And that's what was explained to us in the meeting. It was like, they said, this is the cost of running this building that you're sitting in now.
So is it safe to say that with the hundred thousand kids that are in Lee County School District and two point nine billion dollar budget? That we're well below the twenty nine thousand dollar per student cost?
Well, what, what we're trying to figure out is they keep telling us, and I don't say this negatively. This is an ongoing communication with them, that alls they get is eight thousand dollars per student. And they're essentially telling us that that's what they have to run their budget off of. What a problem is, if you have a hundred thousand kids in the, in the district and you're getting eight thousand dollars per kid, that's eight hundred million dollars. Their budget's two point nine billion. There's an extra two billion dollars in there. So there's other monies coming in that are paying for things and we're having a hard time getting, getting the answer from them. Or what pots of money are paying for what are, you know, some things are listed as grants and we're trying to understand, well, why is this counting against us? If it's a grant and they're telling us, although it's a grant, we're really paying for it. But we, we just started getting deeply into numbers with them the last couple of months, because we thought we had four years. The numbers don't matter now. The numbers matter at the end of four years. Now, they'll show your progress going on. But then all of a sudden, when we heard they're hiring another uh, sir, another contractor coming on, we started looking hard at the numbers. Because we figured that that contractor is being given numbers and we wanted to know what they were be given, what they were being given to base their analysis off of.
Contractor or consultant?
Consultant, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Um, but back to your initial point, we were well on our way to meeting our agreement that we entered into as far as a cost per student prior to Milton.
Absolutely. If you use the same uh, formula that Dr. Bernier used and briefed to the, and briefed to the board. That they voted seven oh on, we were, if you take our seventy some number before Milton, we were probably within a thousand dollars per student. Which uh, I think if we went back in time and told all the council members that we would get that down in seven months, that they would have been apoplectic about it. So yes, we were, we were definitely making headway.
Thanks, John.
Um, just some of the, we, we've already touched on some of this stuff. Some of the reasons, because I know there's some people up at the district that probably feel like that we're. We're getting a little too loud. Uh, but we have reasons for this. Part of it is this third party analysis, this third party um, consultant that they brought on. We, we believed that it wasn't needed. Because we had an ILA in place that we were already negotiating off of. But even if they are going to bring somebody on, because they want to take a fresh look, they went ahead and they gave this consultant numbers. That, that had been proven over time were bad numbers. They gave the consultant the number of fifty kids this year, but we actually had seventy two. So why are they, we're working off fifty? Um, we've talked to their demographer and their demographer, you know, and Pat's going to speak to it a little bit more. But basically said, we can't quantify workforce, you know, so we're just going to give you a number of how many kids we think are going to live on the island. And we said, well, but that's not our plan. Our plan is essentially Sanibel's plan. Fifty percent of the kids that go to school in Sanibel do not live on that island, you know, currently. And you know, that's what we are trying. And I said to him, you know, you keep telling us we need at least a hundred kids at this school to make it viable. Well, if you're admitting we have fifty, you think come from the island, and we're the fifty fifty mixed with off the island, that's a hundred. This is very achievable and as everybody knows here, one resort open, how many more are coming down roads? So uh, it, it's just been our, our uh, our communication with them gets a little frustrating. And then also, you know, and uh, try to be careful, because I, I appreciate them and the efforts that they give, but. It feels like that they keep things from us. You know, uh, the scope of work for this consultant, I, I'd said to him, hey, or we had said to him. You know, we have an ad hoc, this is a working relationship. So if you're going to hire a consultant, can we please take a look at the scope? You know, because maybe there would be something we could add to the scope, or maybe there's some numbers that you're giving are wrong. They wouldn't give us the scope. Till this day, they've never given us the scope. We've got them through some, you know, through some other means, but they would never share the scope of work with us. As part of the, this uh, consultant, they, their people did a county wide telephone survey. And they're telling us that it was a hundred thousand people. I have actually bumped into people that have been called. But then I've asked them for feedback. Well, what questions were asked? Not one question was about the ILA or, you know, the question was, are you familiar with Fort Myers Beach? Do you think they need a school? Should we tear their school down? Or should we spend money to rebuild it? And, and you know, and I'm paraphrasing, but you know, if you had a question in air to where, you know, would it be fair if we entered a partnered agreement? For them to build their enrollment over a couple of years or something along them lines. But that's why we wanted input into what they were doing, because then it would have been easier for us to maybe accept the results. I know, by the way, that survey that, that they did do, and I think it was worded against this, it came back fifty fifty from the county. So they, they didn't get a clear indicator one way or the other way on the county as a whole. And um, I was relieved. I thought the way it was worded, that it was going to come back worse in our favor.
John, if I could, this, while you're summing up here, I just wanted to ask, we have two former school principals here. We have a litany of alumni, we have uh, policymakers, we have community leaders here. And I understand the survey piece, but the consultant was also doing a deep dive into the viability of the school allegedly. We've still not sure of that. But I guess I just wanted to take an informal poll of everyone in the room. Could anyone who has been actually, aside from this survey, which is very generic, has anybody been consult, has been, has been reached out to? By the consultant to get their input about the beach school and its viability? Can anybody just raise their hand? If, if anybody has been consulted, council, council members as well. So nobody in this room on Fort Myers Beach who's extremely active in the beach school has been reached out to by this consultant. Who's making, well, we don't know definitively how much, it's not, no one has been reached out to. And so let, let the record show that no one raised their hand in this room. We're having an emergency meeting about the viability of the, of the, of beach school. And nobody in this room was contacted. That seems odd to me. And as you're a former consultant, John, I, I think that's pretty odd. That the, that the folks most impacted are not, were not contacted at all by a consultant determining viability. This seems very odd.
Take that a step further, Jim. Uh, in our discussions with them about the scope that they wouldn't show us. Um, their director of operations went on and on talking about, you know, this study is going to be really extensive. We're going to go to um, business owners and we're going to go to developers and we're going to go to here and we're going to go to there. And um, we said, well, great, then just let us know, because we can make that happen. We can get you in contact with the developers. We can get you in contact with people that are going to explain our plan better to you. Um, I called Jackie Leesak, uh, you know, head of our chambers, because she's pretty in, in contact with all of our business owners. As of last week, not one of them, not, not one of them were contacted or consulted or asked how many of their uh, their employees had kids going to the school. Or asked about their programs to try to help that happen. None of, none of that has happened. So like I said, that's just our frustration. I don't mean to bash the school, but um.
Well, I think this is a good time to bring up, especially for the record, Jim, I think your point is, in the, in the continued spirit of collaboration. Every one of the, the board members and the superintendent were invited to today's meeting. They have reserved seating in the front. None of them had chosen to be part of this conversation. Uh, none of them chose to show up, but we still want to work with them, to your point. Frustration is very, very evident. You can see it in your face. As a parent, we all get frustrated, especially when it comes to our kids. But again, the me, this, this meeting is to provide information and, and the fact that the town has been working in collaboration with them. And wants to continue to do that to ensure that this school goes nowhere.
Yeah, our, 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 you know, real driver of this meeting was it to be education. Um, we feel like that when we, uh, when we communicate with their staff, that their own staff doesn't necessarily know what was in the ILA. Why, why it was in the ILA and the efforts that we've made. So we're not sure of what message is then going on to the board members. Um, so we felt like it was good, like you said, in collaboration. We want to work with them, but we felt like it was good to put our message out, because we don't get a chance to put it out.
Okay, continue, John.
I think, I think that wraps it up. I had one more slide, but I think we'd basically be covering stuff twice. Uh, does anybody have any more questions for me? Oh, the one thing I would like to bring up, I'm sorry. Let me see, I think I brought this slide up. So it seems like in reaction to our last meeting, we get a um, a weekly update from them. So when their weekly update last week, um, they put in there, and essentially what they were saying is to be clear. Um, we've spent X amount of money on the school and we've only gotten this much back from FEMA and from insurance. We spent, uh, we spent six, we only got three point eight back and you know, and, and maybe we take it a little bit like they're taking a poke at us. We understand that insurance in FEMA, it's been difficult and I'm sure all you know that too. Right, and um, we don't want to be singled out. You know, if you're, if you have a problem with insurance in FEMA, that's a county wide problem and you're having it at every school. And if you are going to single us out, well then let's single us out. Let's talk about how much tax revenue this island generates compared to the other ones. Now, we know they don't want to do that, but if you're going to single us out, let's take a look at it. And as we all know, we're in a short term here, where our property taxes may not be high, give it five, seven years. If they were getting twenty five million dollars, they were getting just under twenty five million dollars went towards, you know, the state, you know. It all gets divvied up different, but from our eyes, and that's probably going to double, you know, I just hit, you know, we've lost a lot of homesteads and a lot of different things. So if you're going to single us out, I think it's important to single out how much comes out of our pockets to support the school as a whole as well.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Uh, my name is Patrick Vanas. I am a proud Fort Myers Beach Elementary School parent. Uh, I am a twenty two year uh, resident of the island. And also, uh, as a day job, I do a little planning and zoning and I've worked on uh, quite a few proposed developments on this island. So I come before you today with a message of hope, a message of recovery, redevelopment, revitalization. And uh, basically to let you know that we're doing a good job and we've got a bright future ahead of us. So my first slide, um, couldn't help myself. I had to poke a little bit, but uh, slides identified as demographers fallacy. Um, so as John explained, uh, right after Ian, we went to work. Uh, the whole community rallied around the school. We fought very hard to justify our school and to keep our school on this island. And one of the things that we were facing uh, after Ian was this, this outside demographer that the district had. That was telling us that we had a declining population, aging population on this island. Therefore, with an over simplistic uh, model, they kept saying, your school population will therefore decline. And you'll never get your numbers up. And we kept telling them, that's the wrong model. You do not understand Fort Myers Beach. You do not understand our community. Help us out here, listen to us. And they didn't. They kept projecting that our school population would decline. And what we, we explained to them, and that's, that's what they were calling the so-called organic growth on the island. But what we said is, is we're a lot more than just our permanent residential population. And that your model doesn't work. Look at Sanibel. They've increased their school population over time. And they attract a lot of families from off island. Um, we also explained to them that the beach community. Has always been more than just the residents. It's about the employers, the employees. It's about San Carlos Island and all the way to Summerlin. And it's, it's a bunch of people that work here and spend a lot of time here and they're adopted families that choose to call Fort Myers Beach their home. And they want to send their, their kids to the school. So we've worked very hard and we, we told, we told the, the school district. You, you've essentially put handcuffs on us for many years and you've restricted our enrollment. And if you work with us, we'll get that enrollment up. Uh, we asked that they expand our school boundary, which they did all the way up to Summerlin. We also asked that while there was a waiver to send kids here that if you were off island. We said, we want this on the school form that goes to every family. We want Fort Myers Beach Elementary listed on there. And it wasn't. And uh, so they, they eventually did that. Um, we wanted a bus hub at Walmart, which they've been providing to help families from off island, bring the, the kids onto the island. Um, and, and then, you know, coupled with the fact that we're an outstanding A school. That we have a great and affordable after school program. And that we are working very closely with the chamber, with all the, the, the business owners. And with the development community in promoting and educating um, all these employers about this opportunity. Um, we've proven them wrong. Um, essentially, as John mentioned, they said. You're lucky if you're going to reach fifty students at the school. And within less than a year, we had exceeded that. We were at seventy two students. And where we got those students was exactly what we were trying to explain to them. We were trying to explain that we have businesses coming online, we have resorts coming online, we will work with that community. Margarita Bell came online after the hurricane. They brought in a bunch of families. Town staff, uh, we had some new hires. And the town staff was educated that, hey, you're working here, you're driving on the island every day, you can bring your children. We've got a great school. That was a bunch of new families. And also, uh, we've picked up families from the Iona area, because it's very close to us. And they know they can have a great education and a great after school program. So right now, um, we, we've got about thirty five percent of our families that are off island families. And we are positive that we can keep growing that and we can get our numbers up.
Patrick, before you move on, I, I think since the storm, I think it's been very evident, this council is very much in favor of doing whatever we have to do. With future development and working with planners like yourself, to ensure that one of the public benefits offered by anyone coming in to ask for something. Is that they help drive that enrollment up. I don't know that we've really given any true policy decision as to what that looks like. Although we're supportive of it, would it be beneficial, and not to steal Vice Mayor's draft analogy, but would it be, would it, would it be beneficial? For the council to give policy direction, call it whatever you want, project SOS, save our school, whatever you wanted to call it. Would it, would it be, would it be beneficial to put something in place or give direction to staff? That is a policy decision that this council wants to see in people that are going to come forth with people like yourself that are, and. And have, have the people that are coming in to ask for something, let them show us how they're going to devise their plan to encourage their employees to bring their kids to school. Whether it's an added benefit, whether it's extra pay, because you're bringing your kids to the beach school, so that we can show the school board. This, this is, we mean business, we want to be collaborative, we really want to make sure that you understand that not only are the Margaritas a little.
that not only are the Margarita Vazquez World, but the other businesses that are coming in want to partake in this because they benefit from it just like our our kids do. So it would it be helpful for us to do something that when we get to the discussion part of it? I I think having policies that promote the school are very helpful. What we've seen, what's been amazing is that all the, all the people that I've worked with and the and the development community has voluntarily, has voluntarily done that. They are willing to do it. They want to partner with this community. Plus, they also know that they they have to staff their businesses. And if they can encourage good employees and provide a great school on this island, it will help them attract good employees and routine employees. So I think any policy can help, but I think a lot of it is education. And I think the plan that we've put forward is we are going to work with the town, the PTO, the school, the Chamber of Commerce and these development entities to educate staff members. And when they recruit, their HR departments can explain that, hey, we've got pamphlets, we've got an A-rate at school. We also have programs that make it easy for you to pick up your kids and drop them off and and we can provide flexible work hours. So those are examples of of some of these policies that can be implemented. But we've seen that voluntarily with developers coming in and rezoning their property and then putting those commitments within the rezoning approval. Well, and that's, that's what I was getting at based on what John said. He had mentioned that, well, we can't really predict what future growth will be when it comes to hospitality and people coming in and work. But I think if we can encourage, again, not guessing, generic, but SOS, whatever you want to call it, if if we can implement that into planners' minds to be able to put that in as a condition of approval that here's exactly how we're going to do it because it takes away any kind of reviewers. Well, we we can't quantify it. Well, yes, we can because we know they're going to have this many employees. This is how they're saying it's going to be a benefit or an improvement to help drive enrollment to the school. Now, it's something that you can actually, it's tangible, you can put your hands on it and you can say, we've got these projects coming in. Here's what they've agreed upon. Here's how we, how many people we we know are going to be coming with kids. I think that could really help take away that, well, we we can't really tell you what it's going to be or what it's not going to be. Yeah. And and we, I I think that's a great idea. I think we can provide data to them. We've offered it. We can, we can document these things. We can demonstrate these approvals that that have gone through and show them the commitments as part of the zoning approvals. But again, we we haven't even been contacted. We haven't been asked to help and we are very willing to do so and we can quantify all these things. But I guess what I'm getting at, I keep, sorry, I keep laboring the same thing, but much like with the DrAC, sometimes it gets into approvals where it's just participate in the DrAC program, but it doesn't really give any specifics of what they're going to do to do it. Yeah. I know we've pushed a little bit, but I think it would be important to have a policy decision that staff can work off of to say, here is what we expect because here's what you were approved to do.
Yeah.
And and be more definite so that we don't ever have to go through this again should there come another storm and we have to deal with this again. We have things in place to be able to say, here's what's in the agreement. Here's what we knows what's coming. Here's where we project things are going to be as opposed to, we just don't know.
Yeah. And I think the development community would would embrace that and partner with it.
I would certainly hope so. Yeah. So moving on to the next slide, I think on on this upwards trend and and redevelopment and revitalization trend, we know we have a lot of approved and proposed new projects. I think that's going to be ushering in a renewal, an economic renewal on this island and a prosperous time and greater employment throughout the island. Some of the smaller kind of service industry projects that we know are coming back online include The Whale, The Cottage, Sandy Bottoms. At Santini, we know New York Pizza Pasta is going to open there. We know South Beach is reopening. The Beach Theater is going to be converted into restaurants. We've got some mixed-use projects, residential projects, resort projects planned and also approved. Myerside is an example, Neptune, Seagate, Red Coconut, Pink Shell, the Lighthouse Expansion, the redevelopment of the Outrigger Bay London Bay and the Arches. So those are all significant projects coming online that will create a lot of employment. And with those employees, we will have children. And I think when those people are told about this awesome school that we have, they will want to send their kids to this school. Just to give you some concrete examples, some of these projects have provided economic analyses and projections. The Neptune, for example, is protect, projecting 75 new jobs for the resort and annual projections of 4.5 million in annual wages. The Arches Project, which is a bigger project, is projecting 227 new jobs and about $12 million in wages on an annual basis. And these are just two projects and two examples, but we have many more coming. And what you see here is is an example of those commitments that have been put in the zoning ordinances. So some of the projects I've worked on, I've introduced this to our clients. They've embraced it. They've been very willing to put this in. But the 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 first part is promoting the B-school, educating their work staff and also creating this collaboration with the town, with the PTO, with the chamber, with the district. And also providing educational materials and explaining to them that through school choice, they can send their kids to the island school. Then another component is providing flexible work schedules. So they can have shifts where shifts begin before the school day. They can drop off the kids in the morning. And we've got this after-school care at Bay Oaks and they can have work schedules that allow them easy pickup at the end of the day. So I think we we have demonstrated that we can increase our enrollment. We feel extremely confident that we can keep doing so because we're only, as mentioned, while the timeframe has been a little longer, but the actual time that we've been back on island at the beach school has only been seven months and we've out surpassed what they projected. We feel very confident with these other projects and other resorts coming online. We will far exceed what they thought was possible and that we have a bright future ahead of us for the beach school. So with that said, I'm going to turn things over to Monica and she's going to wrap, wrap up this presentation. Thanks, Patrick.
Back to Jenny's height. Hi, good morning. My name is Monica Schmucker. I am also a parent at Beach School. I'm the Vice President of the school PTO and I'm also on the ad hoc committee and have been on the ad hoc committee since immediately after Ian. My segment is fairly short. I'm just going to wrap up and have a few rap, just comments to finish all this. But before I do that, I did want to just address a few things that were discussed a few minutes, moments ago, just to make sure that we're clear on a few things to kind of segue into what I want to say. One of the things that was discussed previously was, you know, in the in the ILA, we do have this building, this cafeteria building with the stage area that was to be built. And I just want to reiterate that that building per the ILA was to be built by this year. Not broken ground, not put out to bed, but it was to be built. Okay? And and the wording was this fiscal year, which ends in June for them. There were no contingencies on the cafeteria building. There was nothing stopping them from building it. I know that John spoke to their reason for for not building it that they gave us. Their reason was, well, things can change. But to be clear, this was a separate building. The building before Ian was also multiple buildings. There was a cafeteria building before and that was separate from the classroom buildings per the ILA. As they rebuilt the school in a phase and phases, which is what they were going to do, they were going to add additional facilities, that cafeteria building was always to be separated, separate from the classroom buildings. And that's how it was before Ian. At, there was no sinkhole. That land is still there. There was nothing preventing them from building that building. So I want to make sure that that's clear as well. And finally, before I get into my segment, I know we talked a lot about numbers. And while it's important to understand that our ILA gave us time to reach those numbers and we were making huge headway, so those numbers shouldn't matter. One thing I did want to point out because John did say that they say they receive approximately 8,000, it's 8,000 something per student from the state. However, it's also important because math needs to math, right? When they receive $8,000 per student, they're not taking into consideration other funds from other sources. And I know he kind of touched on it, but I want to make sure that it's clear. When they tag numbers to us, they include numbers from grants. They include numbers from other funding that they say comes from different things, but they tag it to us. But when they talk about $8,000 per student that they receive, they're not including those, those funds. So there really is more to what they're receiving. And we have to make sure that when we're comparing numbers either from one year to another or what they receive versus what they spend, we have to make sure that we're comparing apples to apples. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and just discuss my closing remarks. So a few things, a lot of very important things we discussed here today. But importantly, community schools. Why do we have community schools? We have these small schools and we keep our kids close to home because it's important that our younger, most vulnerable children are not on the school bus for two to three hours per day. Five-year-olds are babies. They just got out of their car seats. And we're sending them across town to another school and we're putting them on a bus for two to three hours a day. The reason that we keep elementary school kids close is because it is very important to keep them close to home. But also important about community schools is that community involvement enhances our education and that is so evident in our school. It's not just a matter of we're going to teach the kids to read and we're going to teach the kids to math or to to add. We have organizations in our community. We have businesses in our community. We have so many people that take part in our children's education and it really truly enhances their education. It is so important. It's also important because it adds accountability to the students. All the teachers know all the parents. All the parents know all the other parents. My kids cannot walk down the street and do something wrong without me finding out.
Neither can adults.
True. When, when we take, put our kids in school, we're teaching them so much. We're teaching them to be humans. We're teaching them to be good people. We want to teach them these things and we we want to teach them accountability. And by having community schools and our kids know that they're being watched, they're being held accountable, that's why they have a good education. Now, one of the things that was brought up here was we had, we have really good, you know, testing because our teacher-to-student ratio is low. Well, we combined classes. And when we combined classes, we had the same number of students per teachers in that kindergarten class that we do in any other elementary school and our kids still tested higher than anybody else. Why? Go ahead. Because we understand that school is more than just the classroom education. It's everything. It's our community. And that's why we have the best K-35 school because we have a great community school and we need to keep it here. And not only because this is their home, right? But Lee County should be trying to figure out ways to make other schools more like our school, not closing our school down. And that's, that's the most important thing here. They should be saying, what are they doing? You know, because even we send them to San Carlos Park and after everything they've done, right? After everything they've been through, they're still testing high and they should be figuring out what we're doing. And that's why it's so important for the educate, for for the education of our kids and for the future of our community to make sure that that school stays here. Thank you. So let me move on to my next point, which is very much in line with that. We teach our kids to be good human beings. We teach them integrity, hard work, keeping our word, right? Integrity, these are, these are very important points. And the school district right now is faced with this agreement that they have made with our community, with you, with every, everybody on this council who supported this agreement. The school board at the time unanimously voted to enter into this agreement for this phased rebuild after Ian. This council, I know unanimously supports it, also unanimously voted to enter into this agreement. And they had, we had a deal, right? We're fulfilling our end of the deal. And they have hired somebody upwards of $200,000 worth to try to figure out a way on how to get out of that deal. That goes against the values that we're trying to instill in our children, which is we adhere to our commitments, no matter how hard it becomes. There were no contingencies on that. We were going to do this phased rebuild and those are, that's what I'm trying to teach my kids, right? And it's important that we instill those values in our, in our kids. We've been, we've been honest. We've been transparent. You know, we've, we've tried to communicate with the school district and with the staff. And as you've heard, it's been extremely difficult. So even when those commitments become difficult, it's important that those commitments are met. And that's what we want to teach our kids and we want the district to teach that to our kids as well. It's a very bad lesson, right? If if a new staff comes in from, you know, in the district and, you know, frankly, they're to adhere to the agreements that are in place. They inherit those agreements. And again, we were supposed to have four years to fulfill our goals, right? To meet our goals, to make our school normal across the, or in line with other island schools. We were going to make our school viable. And as you saw, we were well on our way to make our school viable. In, in fact, we exceeded the expectations. Now, we're working to meet our end. We worked very, very hard in reliance that they were going to meet their commitments. The new superintendent and and the new staff, again, they inherit what's in place. We expect them to honor it. And the fact that they hired this consultant at 200,000 and maybe more, that was, that was the proposal. For the own, it's mind-boggling as to what that study was for, other than trying to find a reason to back out of this agreement. The agreement was for the phased rebuild. That was the word that they gave you, you, everybody here. If this is how the district does business, who's next, right? Who's, who's safe? The district can make whatever promises and not adhere to it. They, what can we trust of them, right? To, if they're making these commitments and then a new staff comes in and they just don't feel they have to adhere to it. So these are the folks educating our children and implementing our day-to-day education. And I think that it's important that we make sure that they adhere to those commitments and teach our kids integrity and also save a very important school within the history of Lee County. So with that, what we're here to do is ask the council to please do everything in your power to ensure the preservation and longevity of our school. And we ask that you ask the town manager and the town attorney to look into all possible options to ensure that the the school district adheres to this ILA for the sake of our kids, for the sake of our community and, well, everything else you heard here today. So I also can answer any questions that you guys have.
Well, Monica, I will, I think in fairness, obviously, you're, you don't shake very often. So when you see you up there shaking, you're, it's very passionate for you, right? Just like John, just like the rest of us that have kids. My kid's grown up, so she won't go to that school. But there's babies back there that will, hopefully. No, they will. I won't say hopefully. And it's, it's an emotional thing for all of us, right? But I think in fairness, it, none of us have seen the ILA yet. So we, we don't know. I've been told that there is nothing, although it does show some of the numbers. The consultants.
The consultant report, you mean, right?
Yes. The viability study, whatever they're calling it. You said ILA. Oh, I'm sorry. I meant, I meant to say the study. None of us have seen those, that study yet. So we don't know that there's going to be any direction in it to close the school. So I think in fairness to the school board and the new superintendent, that that should be stated for the record. I have not seen it, but I've been told you guys have seen at least some of the five options that have been put in the viability as far as rebuilding the school, but one of those was not to close the school. So again, in fairness, I think it's, 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 it's fair to say that until we see that, we don't know for sure that that's actually an option. That's not fair to the the school board members that are going to have to make that decision.
So far, all they said is that there are five construction options.
Right. But none of those were to close the school.
No, there were five construction options. Yes.
Hold on, hold on. I just want to, I just want to finish my point, John, and then you're, you're welcome to come up. Hold on, hold on, I just want to, I just want to finish my point, John, and then you're, you're welcome to come up. I understand the passion and I understand the understanding that we've been through this before, so there's been nothing that leads us to believe that that's not the case, that this is the direction that it may be going. But at the end of the day, there's, there's one person that makes a recommendation, and then the board makes the following policy decision.
That's correct, right.
Staff can recommend whatever they want, and as we've seen in every jurisdiction, the elected officials have the ultimate decision to make. I'm so confident that they see our plea, they see our pitch. I'm willing to give them the benefit of the doubt to allow them to at least get through the documentation that was not in place, they took over, to your point, this agreement that they made. Maybe they'll surprise us, maybe they won't.
Absolutely.
But I think it's important that they hear this meeting and they hear this message, which I'm sure they're watching, I'm sure they're listening. But again, I don't want to get too far off track, that this, this meeting is about, we're here to do what we said we were going to do. We will do what we say we're going to do, to make sure that we don't ever have to have this discussion again, and we're simply asking you to do the same. Is that a fair?
Yes, that's why we want the, the town manager and the attorney to look at all the options to make sure the ILAs continue to be adhered to. Our biggest concern is that we were to have a cafeteria building by the end of this school year. It's not there. So we want to make sure that going forward, we continue to move in that direction.
Sure. We didn't get a chance to pause our end of the agreement, is basically what we're saying. We, we still had to continue forward, and we were meeting our requirements.
Right.
So pauses, you got to hit play first, right?
Right.
All right.
Can I just, I'm sorry, John, can you just give me a quick second, Mr. Mayor, to make a public service announcement? Due to some construction happening, as a lot of you are aware of, we don't have water in the building right now. So if you need to use the restroom, the facilities across the street, our staff will help direct you to those facilities. Concession stand, facilities concession stand. So just had to make that announcement real quick, sorry to interrupt.
That's an important one. Okay. John, go ahead.
Like, one would think, why did we think we should have this meeting right now? Because no decisions have been made. And, and I agree that they haven't done anything wrong yet, but I think it's important, or, or why we got concerned is, the five construction options that they have, they've been out for months now. I think I first seen them three or four months ago. In April, they hired this consultant after the construction options were done. In our meeting, we asked them, is there a sixth option that might not be a construction option? Is there any contemplation to not go with one of them five options to shut our school down? And they would not, they did not say that they, they wouldn't answer. So that's why we felt it was important to get the message out. Because if they just simply said, no, we're adhering to the ILA, we're going forward, I don't think you would see the level of frustration that you see now. But we've given them multiple opportunities to say that, and like, you're absolutely correct. Maybe they have no intent to shut the school down. But if you follow their messaging, which, which we have done, you see the path that it was leading down. So we just felt it was important to have this meeting and get the message out there. But we want to work with them, we want their support, and we're hoping that this happens.
Yeah, and if I may add to that, we, we did trust the process for a very long time. That's why it's taken us over eight months to even have this meeting. Because we did trust that they were going to continue to adhere to everything, and we have. And that's why we want, you know, now, when it's been eight months after, you know, Ian and, and no decision has been, I mean, I'm sorry, after Milton and no decision has been made. You know, just to compare after Ian, we, we were way further along, eight months out. We knew where we were going, eight months out. And after Milton, you know, we had a couple of inches of water in the building. It wasn't anything like Ian. And it's been extremely frustrating process because there's been a lack of communication. And while we could appreciate that there's a change in staff, it's important that the staff educates themselves with what those agreements are that are in place, that they should be adhering to. And it's extremely frustrating that we're eight months out. I do, again, we do appreciate that there are other folks that need to become educated within the district. And this is obviously our, our, our hope to do that, because it's, it's more than time to do it. And we're hopeful that once all that information goes to the right folks, that they're going to make the right decision as well. Because five out of the seven ones that were there, were there when they voted unanimously to the space rebuild.
Questions for Monica? John?
I don't have any questions, but it, it did touch my heart when you talked about this community and how there were always eyes on kids. That's how I grew up. That's the sense of community I wanted. Not only a sense to report the bad things, but to protect the, the children as well and share the good things. So thank you for that.
Yeah, the only time that we have when we're kids is make sure we were back when the streetlights came on. Oh, I didn't mean to touch on a touchy subject.
Okay, thank you. Oh, anybody else, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I have some closing thoughts, but no additional questions, thank you. Karen?
I don't, I don't have questions per se, but I, I think you all know that I have lived with this too since Ian and have been totally supportive. I've seen the effort that has gone in from the Beach parents, from the community, from the council. I just think that we need to have a very driven strategic plan moving forward here of how we're going to address this, very much in the short term, and with a lot of teeth. And whatever we can do to help in doing that, whatever it is, just say the word.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's a true testament to, to you guys. My daughter's in education, and, you know, they've seen that the kids that, that weren't in school during COVID, that were kindergartners and first graders, are having problems now four year, four years later. And for what your kids have gone through, not only the pandemic, but then the effects of Ian, it's a true testament what great parents you guys are and how good our school is. So keep, keep it up.
If I could add just one thing, in asking for your help, also if you can direct your, your staff, the town manager, attorney, to, to really work hard to try to accelerate things. And, and I'll give you a perfect example. We, we've been out of that school for eight months. We've seen very little progress. But moreover, some of us have kids in Cypress Middle School. Cypress Middle School has been torn down. They're going to rebuild the entire middle school within one year. And what we are told is most likely, our kids will not be at the Beach School for the next year. That's what they told us to plan ahead for and to anticipate. And we're talking about mere renovations. And when you compare that to an entire middle school that can be built in one year, we, we definitely think this can be accelerated.
A much larger.
A much larger school at that.
Well, and I think the important message that needs to come out of this is, you know, if I were sitting in their seat, I suppose they're looking at, oh, you know, we've been through two of these now, do we want to do it again? Just look at everybody in this room, look at everybody sitting up at this dais. We've all been through it, but yet we re-landscaped our yards. We built our houses back, not once, not twice, but three times, many three times. So the commitment is here from the community. They need to see that. They need to step up to the plate and do the exact same thing this community is doing. This, this school's been around for 90 years. Looking in the audience out here, there's four different generations of people that have been here. Fran Myers is here, you know? There's four generations, five generations of people here that have either been to that school, supported that school, or went to that school. So the fact that we're staying, the fact that people like Patrick was talking about, that are investing in this community and willing to be part of this program to get those schools back, I think that needs to be very much driven home to your ad hoc committee, that that is our commitment. The commitment is this island, it's the community. So hopefully, we can continue that message and, and, you know, we're going to do whatever we have to do.
Right, and, and the buildings that they were, had in plan or in place to build were going to be elevated buildings. Had they built them, if we did have another hurricane, we wouldn't have to move our kids off island. We can just put them in that building that they would have given us. So that's another important point, too.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, I would, I would turn it around and, and ask any one of the board members, if they're listening, if these were your children, and you had to take them three hours on a bus to school, would you be having the same passion that everyone in this room has today? All right, thanks, Monica.
Thank you.
All right, next is public comment.
I have two signed up.
Okay, who's first?
Jennifer Rusk, I'm sorry, Jennifer Rusk, and following Jennifer will be Ellie Bunting.
Really? Good morning, Jennifer.
Good morning. Good morning, everyone. I am not a parent, but I am a community member. I'm a taxpayer, and I have met many of the children in this community. I have been part of the education process with being on MRF. And I am thinking of something that happened to me when I was a child. And I'm about to share something, it was disturbing, and it is difficult. I was sworn to secrecy as a child. So it's very difficult to talk about this, but I think it's relevant to the school or getting back the school. When I was five years old, I, my brother was sentenced to prison in California. Hi, and for drugs, and the three strikes are out. I grew up going every single weekend to maximum security prisons, Vacaville and Folsom Prison. My school was right down the street from where I lived. So on Sunday nights, those, the Sunday nights and Monday mornings, I really needed a safe place. I needed a crave's normalcy. So my school was very important to me. When I was about 10 or 11, again, for many years, I would spend every single weekend going to this prison, to these prisons. And when I was 10 or 11, my brother had made friends with a high-profile inmate, and I would sit next to this person for many, many months and maybe even a couple of years. And that was Charles Manson. When I was, the highlight of my weekends were to go to the vending machines and get popcorn and candy, and that was my highlight for the weekend. Unfortunately, one day I was, my hair was grabbed by him, and all I remember are inmates coming and taking him down, and I was pulled out by a guard, and, and it was traumatic for me. But I looked forward to going to school, because again, that was my safe place. Now, there's going to be Charles Manson's, there's going to be Ian's, there's going to be Milton's, there's going to be trauma. But what I believe is really important for these kids is that they have a safe place to go. And I believe that the Beach School is a safe place and a safe place to go and learn and to have a meal and to be taken care of and cared for. I really, really hope that the school district, you know, make sure that the school is available to our community. Now, we are a residential community, first and foremost. Yes, we're a tourist town, but it is really important to take care of these kids. I know many of them, and they're amazing kids, and they deserve a school. Thank you so much, make good decisions, thank you.
Thanks, Jennifer.
Ellie Bunting, and after Ellie will be Alexis Cooper.
Good morning, Ellie. Thank you for the email, by the way, it was great. You gotta pull it down so you can.
Pull it down, your stool, right, yeah. I'm Ellie Bunting, I did go to the Beach School. My kids went to the Beach School. My mother taught at the Beach School, and my daughter interned at the Beach School. So I've got a really good connection with the school. I know I'm preaching to the choir here, but I'm going to read this anyway, because other people are listening. In 1937, a small group of Fort Myers Beach parents came together to open a school on the island because they understood what we all know to be true. A local school is the heart of a community. From humble beginnings in a borrowed cottage with just 25 students, our school has grown into a cherished piece of island life. Over the years, enrollment has fluctuated, affected by seasonal residence, housing affordability, and more recently devastating storms. But through it all, the school remained a place where children learned, families connected, and the community gathered. After Hurricane Ian, the school was repaired, and for a brief time, students returned. Then came more storms, another closure, and renewed uncertainty. Still, parents, educators, and supporters have been working nonstop to meet the enrollment benchmark set after Ian. What we need now is time and continued support. We know the town council understands the value of our island school. You've stood with us before, and we thank you sincerely for that. Your leadership has spent everything during these challenging months. As the district reevaluates the school's future, your voice remains crucial. We respectfully ask you to continue fighting for our school, to help us secure a commitment to reopen this, this hall, that's a little bit. Anyway, we have that assurance that it is nearly impossible to encourage families to enroll. But with your support and a clear path forward, we believe we can meet the district's requirements and preserve a vital part of our community. Our school is more than a building. It is a symbol of resilience, history, and hope. With your help, it can also be part of our future.
Thank you, Ellie.
Alexis Cooper. And that's all I have signed up.
Ah, you're bringing the future student.
One of three future.
One of three, well, there you go, look at that enrollment skyrocket. Keep up the good work.
I'm Alexis Cooper, I'm currently a parent of a kindergartner who is at Fort Myers Beach Elementary. And I just wanted to take a moment to let you guys know how much the school means to us. So my daughter Paisley, going into Fort Myers Beach, had never been in daycare, she'd never been with a babysitter more than maybe five times with her grandparents. And Fort Myers Beach took the most amazing care of her in those first two weeks as she transitioned into school. And I really don't think that she would have done as well if she had been anywhere else, because they care. They have the small community to support her. They made her feel so loved, so welcomed. She went from crying every day, when she went into running up and hugging all her teachers. She went from scoring zeros on the very first state assessments, she's scoring fours and fives. She's reading fluently after not knowing how to read. She didn't know how to spell her name going into kindergarten. That's my fault, but Ms. Catlet and all of the staff, Ms. Skipper, all of them poured their heart and soul into that school. And I just know that she would not get the same education anywhere else. I don't want to send my kids to another school in Lee County, because I don't trust them to give my kids the same education. And I have three kids, one of which is not going to start this school year, he'll start 2026, he'll be a kindergartner. And then I'll have a third grader, and then I would have a fifth grader, a third grader, and two kindergartners at the school, if we can keep it open. And I just know that allowing them to stay there is going to propel them so far academically, much more than any other school in this county would. And I just ask that you guys please fight for our kids and fight for our school, because they really are just a needle in a haystack of a school in any school district in this country. They really care, they really are doing such a great job. Thank you.
That's all I have signed up.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak in public comment? Jackie?
Good morning, everybody. Jackie Lezak, President of the Fort Myers Beach Chamber of Commerce, also a Beach resident. And unfortunately, I never had the chance to attend the Beach Elementary, although I was here in the winters, I would have loved to have gone. But I'm here standing in front of all of you to let you and the entire school board and the superintendent of Lee County School District know that the Beach community, business community, is committed to this school and to this community. I know that our Beach businesses will do whatever it takes to make sure that this Beach School stays intact, stays whole, and stays functioning far into the future. We are now making decisions in this community that are going to affect four to five generations to come. People will never know, our great-great-grandkids, who are, we're making choices for them now that will affect them and their families. This is a critical, critical part of our community. This Beach School is our heartbeat. You take this away from us, then you take away our heartbeat. And listen, we've all been through enough. Every single person in this room has lost something because of these storms. And guess what? We're all still standing here, aren't we? We're here committed for the school. The business community on this island is committed for the school, and we will do whatever it takes. The, the Chamber of Commerce has a plan in place. We actively talk and recruit employees, children, and I think that's going to be a critical component to the school staying open and staying well into the future. It also drives jobs. People bring their children here because they're working here, and they come to work here because their children can go here to an A-rated, top-tier school in the state of Florida. So I'm imploring the school board to hear our plea, to work with us, to honor the agreement and the commitment that you made, that you signed with our town and with our community, uphold your end of the bargain, and show our children that when you make a promise, you make a word, you keep your word, and you fulfill your promise. Thank you so much.
Anyone else? Anyone? Come on up.
Hey, good morning, all. I'm Kathy Young, I'm with.
I'm Kathy Young. I'm with the Fort Myers Beach Kids Foundation. And you've heard all the nuts and bolts. You guys know what's going on here. And I guess what we're asking you to do is because it seems like the district is just kicking the can down the road. That viability study, seriously? They've already got commitments made and promises made to us. Let's follow through with that. Like you say, let's find a path to rebuild the school. We know what the problems are. Let's fix it and make it work. So now I guess what we want from you guys is as elected, elected- Help me out, Dan.
Official selves.
Yes. To speak to the district, you know, and hear our voice. Because as you heard, we can't talk to, they're not responding to any of these people here. And we need an elected board to go speak to them. They'll go hear our voices. Let's make a plan to fix the problem. We know what the problem is. That's all I got. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak in public comment? No one? Really? Oh, Fran, come on up. Hey, I'm not gonna miss that poll in the middle of the- I mean, it's a great clock holder.
I really did not plan to speak today, but I have a few things.
Fran, just for the record, state your name, in case anybody doesn't know who we are.
Fran Myers. Can I say Fort Myers Beach?
You can say whatever you'd like.
For 50 years.
Thank you.
You know, when I moved to the island in 75, it was like the Wild West out here. I don't know if any of you know that, but there were some things going on that shocked me. And I lived in the middle of Times Square with three kids. And we had things like, I don't know if you remember the beer garden over the top of the Dairy Queen. But I saw the college kids tear that down. Some turn over the police car and the sheriff's deputies' cars in Times Square. It's one of the times we decided to close the square. But I really couldn't believe how much the community was involved. And the very first thing that I did when we moved here was to, number one, go to the Chamber of Commerce. And number two, go to the beach school. Because I knew without a school, you know, you had nothing. And I met, and I wanna say his name is Bob Brobecker. Larry, am I right? Do you remember? Was that him? And when he told me what was going on at the beach school, I really couldn't believe it. I thought, wow, I came from Ohio and we had great schools. But this has gotta be something really, really, really special. And so we called it, we started calling it a community school instead of beach elementary. We started calling it a community school. And I don't know how many of you remember, but we had our own school board. And, you know, we had no power. But we had our own school board. And we would do everything the school board downtown did. But of course, we always had to have their permission to do everything. But it worked, it worked really well. We did that for about 15 years. And it worked, it worked really, really well. And it kinda made it more of a community school. When I say a community school, yes, the Beach Kids Foundation certainly. But just the really community, I mean, the things I remember, and I wanted to bring some of these new things in case you didn't know, were parents that had no money or had no means of support. And I can recall a single lady had four children. She was being kicked out because she couldn't pay. And, am I on a time limit? I'm sorry.
Well, give me just a second. Does anybody have any issues with Fran taking as long as she'd like?
No. Oh, you guys, thank you. Thank you very much. But you know, all we had to do was go to the community. And the community came up with money. We paid her rent. She stayed. And the fire department, as you know, has been, all along, has been our partner. And a lot of times, well, I can remember one child who had no bike or her car. She was a single woman too, and she had, she had no, she had, she had a car, but it got ruined. So we called the fire department and they came with all the fire trucks, raring, blowing. We thought, oh, we can't embarrass this kid. And so the fire department brought a bike and they had the mother and the two kids there. And I can remember at least five years, she rode that bike. And she had one kid in the basket, one kid on the back. So I mean, there's been so many things. And one really nice one was a little boy who had a huge growth on his face. And his parents couldn't afford, his parents couldn't afford to get the growth taken off of the operation. And the doctor finally said, can I tell him that right, Larry? I think I'm telling it right. The boy couldn't get the growth off his face and the kids tended to make fun of him. All we had to do is reach out to a few neighbors and the operation continued. And the little boy looked great. That's, I mean, I think that's what a community school really is. So I just wanted to tell you some of those things and some of the things that the community has reached out with. You know, yeah, the school board could have bought Chromebooks, but they didn't, so we bought them. You know, they, they, they could have bought new desks for all the kids because God knows they need them. God knows they needed them. And so we bought entire new desks for the whole school. Part of the aquarium material we helped with. And all the camera, they had no sound equipment for their stage. So the community reached out and bought it. And the playground, I never had a hammer in my hand in my life. And the playground, they said, we're gonna build our own playground. And we all said, yeah, right. And so we built our own playground with an architect who supplied, brought everything in. And, I mean, what a time that was. It lasted for weeks. So, you know, we're all very emotional, I think, about the beach school. My kids went there, my grandkids went there. That's a long time ago. And so I just want to tell you that it's an island, it's an island that, the only place I've ever felt that I could walk out of my house without my purse, maybe forget my purse or forget my money, and I could go into probably any business there was, I think I still could do that. And I'd say, gosh, I forgot my purse today. I don't have any money. And they'd say, well, get what you want and bring it back tomorrow. There's not very many communities that you can go to and, and, you know, feel that love. So I don't want to preach to the choir. You guys have all been, you guys have all, all been very emotional about this and have done your job. And thank you, Jim, for being the person that went to the meetings. But we're all praying very hard. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Fran. Anyone else like to speak? Larry, come on up. Didn't see you back there, but now that makes sense that the two, the two principals. I didn't see you back there.
Larry Wood. I was the principal for 10 years at Fort Myers Beach Elementary and retired about 10 years ago. I just want to say that I hope that the school board and the new superintendent, I'm familiar with her extraordinary good, good person. But I hope you're watching because this is the personification of a community school. And community schools, all the schools are trying to become that. They, we have pep rallies and they want school spirit. We have not only school spirit, but our council people and everybody here, the staff, are totally supportive of the school. And the parents, of course, are very sore. They could just let it go away. They're not. Why not? It's because of the community feel. And you are, all the people in this room are generating that feel for a community school. And I thank you all, and the children, thank you especially. And don't give it up. There's, the school district is trying to get this feel everywhere. We already have it. We want to keep it. We want to make that our kids, give them the opportunity to live through that. So I'm totally in support. And whatever I can do to help, let me know.
Thank you, Larry. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak in public comment?
Good morning. Deborah Grill. Island resident since 1980. Two graduates of the beach school and president of the Beach Kids Foundation. So thank you for scheduling this meeting. You can see how passionate we are, how important it is. And I just am gonna make a couple of comments that, over the years, we've done many things for the beach school and we know where these kids come from. Many came, as everyone has said here, from service industry. And that will build up and we believe in, and I hope you do too. And I also have a daughter that lives here, owns real estate, has a three-year-old. She's hoping to attend the beach school. So, and I also sell real estate here for years and years. And it's very hard to attract families when we don't have that as a community with the beach school. So hoping for the best outcome and really support us. Thank you.
Thank you. Roseanna, come on up.
Hello. Roseanna Riley, business owner, mom. I've been here over 24 years. I've raised several children that went to the beach school. My grandson that moved back in with us, who's gonna be 22, he went to kindergarten at the beach school. And I don't have a lot to say, just, it's just really important for our community to have a school for the residents. I mean, these, these children are small children. They should not be on buses for several hours. They need to be here. It's, it's our home. Thank you.
Thanks, Roseanna. Anyone else? Think about it? No? Okay. We'll close public comment and bring this to our administrative agenda. The discussion on the school. Nancy, you'd like to set us off?
I can. First of all, I think Jason has a couple of slides he's gonna put over on the overhead.
When you say Jason has a couple of slides, who are you referring to?
Jason Freeman.
Isn't he also a graduate of the beach school?
Yep. Yes. And he knows how to get those slides up there.
Just wanted to state that for the record.
So the, I think what these slides are gonna illustrate is that in the past, there has been a very cooperative relationship between the town and the school board. And it'll be illustrated by the various resolutions and actions that have been taken by the town over, over time. It begins in 2020, Jason, with the adoption of Resolution 20-45. And this was an interlocal agreement that provided for the exchange of some real property and the commitments to make some improvements between the property that had been owned by the school board as well as property owned by the town in the Bay Oaks Recreational Center. That, that agreement as far back as 2020 did create some obligations on the town to do some improvements, to provide for basically playgrounds and other amenities that would augment the, the programs that were administered by the school. There was also a requirement as far back as 2020 to adopt a shared use agreement. And the shared use agreement was for basically the ability for the school board, these are the various parcels that were going to be exchanged, to allow the school board to use the town's facilities and the town to use some of the school board facilities as well. So that was in place back in 2020. They anticipated-
Nancy, before you move on, real quick, you should mention the playground. It was one of the improvements that was required to be made under that interlocal agreement, if memory serves me correct when we were on, right? Is that playground in operation today?
It is, sorry. It is in operation. However, we're not able to access it. I've reached out numerous times as, as our Bay Oaks manager. I did get one response and they'd look into it and still should be part of it, but that was, I mean, we probably reached out.
Reached out to who, Joe?
Dr. Adam Malloy, the district. And I think, I think Neil Mathis reached out to maybe Ken Savage as well, so.
So even after-
So, and I even offered to, or the town, sorry, even offered to, to put up a fence to keep it secure and separate from the school. But I didn't get any response on that, you know, after the, we'll look into it. And it is part of our ILA. And, you know, this, that playground is just sitting there empty. It was part of the agreement that we would, we would put it up there, which we fulfilled that agreement twice, actually, after Ian. So we, you know, we've fulfilled our, our, our part of that as well. As long, as well as us actually cutting the grass over at the school too for them to-
Guess that's my point I was trying to get at. Even after Debbie, Padalia, Helene, and Milton, the schools, the, the beach school elementary playground is still operational, could be operational today.
Yeah, it was, it was put after Ian. Ian kinda wiped away. We were ready to install it for them. Ian wiped the equipment away for ready to install, so we repurchased it. And it's installed and it looked beautiful. I just wish our community could use it.
Just another example of the community stepping up an additional cost to fulfill our requirements of the interlocal agreement.
So again, even as far back as 2020, the, the notion of having a shared use agreement in place, that was one of the conditions of that exchange. There was the First Amendment and because we were not able to get, for whatever reason, the closing wasn't proceeding as scheduled, so they extended it for 60 days. That was in 2021. Thereafter, we did adopt a formal agreement, that is, the shared use agreement for the proposed redevelopment of the Bay Oak School. That particular one in 2021 was not executed by the school board because the closing had not occurred yet regarding the exchange of the properties. There was a Second Amendment to the exchange ILA. And what that did was basically made some minor, well, I shouldn't say minor because it probably not minor, but it, they, the parties agreed to amend some of the legal descriptions of the properties that were gonna be swapped. Again, extending the closing date for 60 days in a cooperative manner.
I think it's, it's important to point that out because for the members that weren't on council at the time, I know Vice Mayor could have, can attest to this. That was very difficult negotiations. It was a lot of back and forth, almost to the point where the town management at this time was willing to back out of the agreement. But the council kept pushing to make sure that, that we got that done because we knew it was important. But it was very, very, it was a very painful negotiation that I think, Jim, I'm not understating that by any stretch you can imagine. But eventually it did get done.
And so in, the closing occurred for the exchange of the properties in August, I think it was August 1st of 2021. The next day, the shared use agreement became effective, which I believe still is in effect today. It has an Exhibit C on it, which talks about how they'll be able to use some of the town's facilities for their programming. And then Hurricane Ian came. And after Hurricane Ian, that precipitated the need for the ILA. That has been the topic of discussion for, of today. You know, many of the comments that were made regarding the provisions of the interlocal agreement, I, I agree with. It's, it's set forth in your agenda materials. The school board's responsibilities begin approximately page seven of your materials. There are provisions, as has been stated, regarding the timeline for the renovation and the rebuild of the, the school. And Phase 1 does include the responsibility of the school board for renovating the historic building with- building with the deadline by the fall semester of 2023. So needless to say that, that deadline was not attained. The next item in Phase One of the rebuild is by fiscal year 2024-25, the school board shall build additional Fort Myers Beach Elementary facilities to accommodate a permanent kitchen cafeteria. You've heard comments about that. And also by fiscal year 2024-25, in compliance with applicable law, regulations, building code, they shall improve the historic building with additional, additional classroom space to accommodate the growth, not to exceed 80 student stations. And then it goes on in the agreement to have a Phase Two that identifies some benchmarks for the subsequent years. Again, as has been stated, it is a four-year agreement. As all our contracts do, there's a provision in there regarding default. So in the event a commitment is not made or kept, there is a notice requirement that you give to the other party saying that, hey, you know, you're not fulfilling what your responsibility was. And there's always the opportunity to try to resolve that. Sometimes it is a issue of bad communication, bad information that's being provided, which I think you've heard comments made today as well. In your agreement, the parties, when they approved this in 2023, some of you, I think all of you were here, in paragraph 7.3 does talk about unavoidable delay. And in that section, it's basically saying that if either party is unable to meet their deadlines that have been established due to circumstances beyond the control, then, then the, the parties can basically extend those deadlines as needed due to such occurrence or circumstance. And that could be related to the subsequent storms that we have, arguably providing for some of the basis for the delay. There also is a section 7.4 that talks about either party can enforce the agreement by court proceedings, and the parties can agree that they would pay their own attorney fees and costs. So that is the, I would say, the legal framework as far as where the town finds itself at, at this point. You know, I was asked if I would be giving a recommendation, and I didn't, I don't think I will, but I would take direction from you. However, I think it's already been said by members of the town council that really to move forward, you do need to get a copy of this consultant's report and have the opportunity to look at it yourselves and come up with some direction to, to provide. I have had conversations with the school board attorney. I am under the, it's my understanding that that copy of that report will be available very shortly, as early as possibly tomorrow. The town does have a pending public records request for a copy of it, and I think once we get that and we can look at it from our perspective, we would then be in a position to, to take additional, additional action. The opportunity to continue a cooperative relationship with the school board, to go in and look at the existing ILA and review it, and whether, what timelines perhaps need to be amended, or other changes that need to be made, creating more benchmarks, putting, I think the words were more teeth into it, and accelerating it as well. That's another option you have. The other option that I heard discussed today was possibly an SOS, which could be a resolution stating that it is the town's policy to promote the school enrollment in school and asking for any businesses and developments that choose to come to the island to be part of that effort. And the last one, which we really, at this point, don't want to go to, would be some type of litigation. I will advise you that under Florida law, there is a separate statutory section in Chapter 164 that basically requires mediation to occur prior to actually litigating between two governmental entities. So that, that, those would be my comments that I wanted to share with you for your direction and your further deliberation. That was me. I tried to-
Well, if you were trying to knock it off, you'd get it. Scott, would you like to start the discussion? I was already looking that way, so.
I, I think we need to, you know, it's, it's sad that those chairs are empty right there. You know, all the signals I see aren't good, but I think we're so close that we need to see what that report says. I mean, I, I, I have a hard time believing that we've asked for it multiple times and we haven't gotten it. And even the, the, their version of the MMP next week, that document's not one of their, the attachments. So what's really going on? It, it's really, really disappointing. I, I think the, you know, they, they need to look at examples where interlocal agreements worked. After the, the tornado in Joplin, Missouri, the, the, the town and the school board worked together. Everything was open, transparent. It was a success story. And I don't want this to turn into a Katrina where there's a lot of promises that were made, or after the hurricane in Puerto Rico, same thing. You know, promises were made, promises weren't kept, and the end result was the, the most vulnerable people, the children, suffered. It's just a shame.
Karen?
So the meeting, the next upcoming meeting is June 3rd, and that, my understanding is not an actual school board meeting, but a working meeting. Is that correct? Or, so workshop, discussion workshop on just this, or does it include a lot of other things? Okay.
So there's a, there's a, there's a, a school board workshop at 1:00, and there's a meeting at 6:00 PM. Just so I don't have to repeat all of that. John, come up and state what you-
Sorry, I shouldn't be asking the questions, but I'm trying to get a framework here of what our next steps need to be.
So our understanding that we found out in the last day or so is there'll be a workshop on June 3rd, in which they will discuss Fort Myers Beach Elementary. That will be in the middle of the day, 1 o'clock or something like that. That evening, they will have a standard school board meeting, but our understanding is that Fort Myers Beach Elementary will not be on that agenda. We're being told at this time that we think the decision point will be at the end of July, July 29th, maybe, into which that would be the decision point. Now, this has been a moving target with them. As of the other day, they couldn't commit to us what was going to happen on June 3rd, but that's been the latest that we've been, that we've been told.
So John, at that workshop meeting, which is at 1:00, are we, are we, are we invited? Are the parents going to be there to present anything? What, what does that workshop entail?
Through our ad hoc, I, I don't know if they have a parliamentary mechanism for that, but we're going to ask if we can speak at that. At minimal, there will be public speaking there. It's tough sometimes to speak publicly because of the, the, you know, the restraints or the time restraints that you have. But through our ad hoc, we're going to ask if we could give a small, you know, streamlined presentation that would, you know, cover some of the information that we put out today as far as numbers and agreements and stuff like that.
You know, if they only limit, limit to public meeting, everybody could take their part for three minutes and just keep going, going, going to present this. But I think for that, what I'm trying to get at is, we need to have a plan, we need to have a packet, we need to have a strategy. I know you guys are all working on it, but, and we need to have people there at that ad hoc meeting at 1:00 to show the determination. And I think if they, if they don't listen to this meeting, they will truly understand the determination on June 3rd. And so whatever we can do with that ad hoc committee-
Well, that's not the ad hoc, that's the, their workshop. This is their meeting.
But I mean, our ad hoc committee to prepare for that and be present for that, and anyone else that can be there for that.
Well, we generally have, a month or two ago, when we started to get loud, Ms. Cardin had assigned a weekly meeting to where we have like a phone conference, a teleconference with them. Today's has been canceled, so there, we don't have an official venue with them before the workshop, so we're just going to send the ad hoc committee members, are going to send them an email requesting that.
No, I mean-
We're going to go back and forth.
Yeah, we'll go back. I'll wait till we go back and forth. Monica?
Just briefly, because I did pull it up, we are 30 minutes on that agenda. There are 11 items for that workshop. Just, just to-
So we do have 30 minutes?
Well, they have 30. Frankly, I'm not sure if there's public comment at the workshop.
I'm not seeing anything.
On the agenda, there is time for public comment during the workshop.
So we're one of 11 items to answer.
Okay.
Is that what it's, consequently, it says public content, is that what they're meaning? But comment on it?
Letter C in the workshop agenda, if you pull it up on the Lee County School District website, does say public comment during the board workshop at 1:00.
Okay, thank you.
One of the things that might be helpful is that the town requests time to speak publicly. The way their rules work is that they have more than 30 speakers signed up. They limit every speaker to one minute. So we have sent in a request asking if we could cede time to each other. What we'd like to do is, is again, we can bring a lot of people, children, we can cede time to each other, and we can have an organized presentation. We have requested that, we have not heard back from them. So maybe if the request were to come from council rather than the parents, we might be a little more successful there. Thanks.
John?
No, frustration has been the word of the day today, and I think I'm personally beyond that, especially when we find ourselves in this position less than two years after the hard work of Jim and the, and the parents to get to the interlocal agreement, then find out they're spending at least $200,000 on a consultant. Really irritates me. I spent a decade in radio, and from time to time, radio stations would hire a consultant. And those of us that were professionals working would always say, those who can't do, those who can't consult. So I think I'm going to try and limit my negativity, I guess, or my frustration, but Monica touched on it for me, too, is that what are we teaching our children if we're not going to honor agreements? So that's, that's a big issue with me.
Vice Mayor?
Well, I, I, a couple of quick things. I, I don't want to be redundant. I have sat on this ad hoc committee, proud to serve on it with these amazing parents, school principals on this, that, one of the teachers, Jackie Lesec from the Chambers, official member. And then there's a litany of very high rankings Lee County school administrators who are on this ad hoc committee, and there's a lot more who come and attend these meetings. And recently, we would meeting weekly, we, we met, we last met in person on the 22nd of May, which sort of solidified the concern of everyone involved in that, Dr. Savage was there, who I believe is the deputy or a superintendent, maybe assistant superintendent. He was asked directly, and, and they posited five options for us to consider on rebuilding or refurbishing the school, and reasonable people can agree to disagree on which, which of the five is the best. But Dr. Savage was asked directly, is there a sixth option? And he could not give us a straight answer. And, and, and again, and he may, may not know or may not be able to, but just that, that inability to give us a direct answer as to whether the viability of the school is on the table, in and of itself is a direct violation of the interlocal agreement. Now, if they have changed course and want to amend the interlocal agreement, as John had said early, and maybe build a new school and maybe add the cafeteria to that school, boy, let's lead with that, instead of leaving everyone out here hanging by a thread, wondering what indeed is happening. On a much more positive note, we have an elected school board who, who has consistently been very supportive of the school. So I would, instead of waiting just until June 3rd, I would encourage folks individually to reach out. Everybody has the facts today, the ad hoc committee, parents have done an amazing job of laying out the groundwork. I'm hoping some of our school board friends were watching, because there's a lot of misinformation out there. There's a lot of new folks involved. I just encourage you to reach out to the school board members. Some of it may be data-driven with facts, some of it may be your passion for the school, but I think it's important that the school board members hear from us. We now have an elected superintendent of schools who ran on the premise that the Beach School is critical to Fort Myers Beach. We want to take her at her word. She needs to provide direction to her team and her staff and her attorneys that could give us some peace that the interlocal agreement will be agreed to and be complied with. If not, let us know what changes you're thinking about. And, and, and there seems to be a lot of lack of communication, and maybe that's because they don't know the course. If that's the case, tell us that. We're confident, and we remain confident, the elected school board, if given the facts, we keep talking about this consult report, we just learned today that no one in this room, probably the largest advocates for the Beach School are in this room today, no one was consulted by this, because I'm a consultant. If I was a consultant, first people I would talk to are the people impacted directly. It's bizarre to me. I'm a little, I'm more than a little annoyed. I'm, I'm always trying to be polite, but this consultant piece, particularly when we, we're not told the scope, and there's a lot of mystery around it, a lot of taxpayer dollars going to it, as a tool to me thus far seems ineffectual. So, and the inputs are, are, as we heard from John, in terms of the cost per students and enrollments, et cetera, Patrick talked about demography, the inputs to this consultant reports are flawed. So we have to be very careful when this consultant report comes out, that we don't accept the premise of the, of the consultant report, because clearly they've not looked for a balanced input, particularly for people who are knowledgeable and impacted. So that, that's odd. So I, I just think we need to stay positive with respect to the school board, because they have, they have been clairvoyant with respect to seeing the big picture, what we've been through. And I think the school board, they hold all the cards. So as we reach out to the school board over the next few weeks, I think that's critical. We have a superintendent who is an unknown, although she's publicly expressed support. We want to believe her. I, I, I visited with her numerous times. She seems like a very honorable person. But it's time for her to lead and provide some direction to her team, and make sure the inputs that the council, that, that the elected school board are, are getting are, are solid and fact-based. And let's also remember some of the history. I know we have a new team there at the Lee County School District, and God bless them, it's a hard job, but let's remember some of the history after Ian. These parents sent their kids off island for a long time, at great hardship, to save money for the school district, and that seems to have been lost along the way. And that needs to be remembered, that needs to be built into the calculation. So I've talked long enough. I just thank everybody for being here today. Hope everybody sticks around to walk over for the school. But I do encourage you to proactively reach out, not just to the school board members, but also to the elected superintendent, and let's make our case. We've got some time to do that, and we're hopeful, and history has shown that they've, they've honored those, that input, and, and certainly we hope that that continues. Thank you.
Excuse me, I, I know we're wrapping up here, but I, I have a small request that we have our former principal here, and I don't know if, if she's allowed to speak or we can ask her to speak, but I think she can shed some light on some of the, the additional funding and the additional community support that are, that- the additional funding and the additional community support that are, that, that we received on behalf of the school, that the, the, the district did not need to pay for. I think she has some figures on that, I don't know if that's helpful to you guys or not.
Thanks, John. You know, I, I won't reiterate a lot of things that Jim said. You know, I'm a benefit of the doubt type of person, I was fortunate enough, the superintendent met with me on Friday. She felt it was important that the two of us meet as well, to discuss. She, like Will, is, is new to her position. There's a lot of information, she's got a lot of people to cover. I firmly left that meeting feeling that she was open to any discussion. She was very honest, that she did not have all the details that a lot were presented today, but that she was going to spend the weekend getting caught up on those. I think it's important to note that what Jim said, every one of the people that are listed on those cards in front of us have been very supportive. I've spoken to many of them, if not all of them, about the beach school since Hurricane Ian, who remained to be supportive. They understand that not everything is about dollars and cents, as long as both parties are trying to make it so that it doesn't have to be a policy decision, which I think is exactly what we were doing before Milton hit. I left that meeting feeling encouraged. I did ask the specific question that you, you brought up about a sixth option. I was told very bluntly, and I'm not trying to disclose anything that I think she wouldn't say, or to, to say something that, you know, is outside of what has already been said, is that there have been five options, but she was very clear that the, she has not seen, at the time, she had not seen the full study or the viability, viability study report, whatever you want to call it, but was going to spend the weekend to do it. And I believe her, I mean, we haven't seen it. I, I think allowing the people that are going to make the decision, the opportunity to look at it before everybody else does, allows them the opportunity to answer questions, should we have questions. She also understands that, you know, where we're coming from on this side, because we've been through this before. There was a push to close the school, we all know it, it's not a secret. Had it not been for that building being a historic building, I think they would have closed that school, that's my personal opinion. But the school was saved because of that designation. But I think since then, the agreement that we've entered into them, with them, we have shown them, whether it's the park for the kids, whether it's the after-school programs, whether it's getting the enrollment, whether it's encouraging businesses to invest in our island. We've done our part. At this point, I made the message very clear, all we're trying to do is ask you to honor yours. And at the end of the day, the recommendation only comes from one person, and that's her. Just like Will, in our case. Staff will give him input, he will make a recommendation to us, or Nancy will make a recommendation to us, and we will make the policy decisions. So although we really want to focus on what this person said or that person said, at the end of the day, it really only matters what Denise, as the figurehead of that department, says to their, the people that they work for, and then they make the policy decisions. I agree wholeheartedly, send a letter out, I think as long as we continue the message that we're not here to fight, we don't want to fight, we've all fought enough. But we're not going to quit, and we're not going to give up. So don't push us into a fight, because we don't want to fight. We want to make sure that we get the kids back in the school. No one wants to transport their kids. Because when I heard three hours, I was like, geez, if someone told me I'd do that to my daughter, I'd be out there, but I'd be much more angry. I don't like to fight, but I will if I have to. And I don't think we'll get to that point, quite honestly, trying to talk to you guys out there, we won't get to that point, I don't think so. I think Denise means what she says, she's got a job to do, just like the rest of us, she's got to make sure that it's fiscally responsible. And I think the more that she knows that we're willing to continue to make that decision easier for her, the more she will fight for us. That's my opinion, that's what I believe she will do. I think a good recommendation would be to have Will and Nancy work with Denise and their lawyers to get to a point of discussion before June 3rd. To make sure that we don't have to stand up there and reiterate all this stuff that we went through in the past. We don't have to replant our bushes, no pun intended. You know, we don't have to redo our yards again, we don't have to redo our basements, we don't have to buy new furniture. We don't have to buy new refrigerators again. So whatever that takes, if that means, you know, we've shown that we're willing to step up. You know, I talked about this SOS thing, it's maybe a bad pun, but it's truthful, maybe we call it something else, but I think if my fellow counselors are on board, I think it's important to, to direct staff to say, when, when new development is coming in, we need to get concrete, not just a simple line that we're going to participate in the program. Here's what our program is going to look like. Here's what we are going to do to not only continue to drive up enrollment, but to make sure that that, we're not going to just meet the expectations of what the cost per student, we're going to try to supersede it. And here's how we're going to do it. And I'm looking at you, Patrick, because I know you, I mean, you've only had one or two projects that you've represented in the last two and a half years, but going forward, I think that's an important message, if I can get the support from, from my fellow counselors to, to direct staff to do that, I think that will show, again, another step the town is willing to do, to say, it's not just about the, you know, the land swap, it's not just about the playground, and it's not just about the school. To your point, Patrick, there's absolutely, having a construction background, I know John's got it, there's absolutely no reason that school is not open, zero. And I don't think there's anybody out there, even if they were sitting there, that could tell me to my face that there's any reason why that school is not open. Why our kids are going to have to wait another year to go back to school is unacceptable. So I think you've heard, I will continue to ramble on, but I think you've heard enough information up here from staff, or from, from the council to let you know in the public that we are standing behind you. I think if we continued on the path of communication, which, which the superintendent agreed, communication is key, giving her the benefit of the doubt to get caught up. I think going into that June 3rd meeting, if Will and Nancy are willing to have those conversations, that I think we can get to a point where we can all kind of breathe a little sigh of relief. If it means speeding up the school, I think that's an important note to bring up, the, the replacement of that school. There's certainly enough people out here with enough background and enough resources to, to assist. If that's something we could do, they've, in the past, the prior administration was not very keen on allowing us to help, for whatever reason, I don't know, but there is no lack of willingness in this community to help, whether it's financially, whether it's physically, whether it's swinging that hammer. Who said they weren't going to swing a hammer? I don't remember who it was, but. We've got time to teach you Fran, don't worry. We're going to get you the Fran tool belt. Or we can borrow it from the dolphin, from the early days after the storm. But, but I think that, that's important, is the communication. We, we don't know, we don't know until we see that study. But once we do, I have no doubt that staff will, will get behind it very quickly, let us know, get it in our hands as fast as we can, so that if we have to go on June 3rd, we're prepared to say exactly what we need to say. But, you know, again, I like to give people the benefit of the doubt, and I think the communication between our, our staff here and their staff will be key in lowering the temperature of the room, if you will. I think you guys did a great job today in stating what you wanted to say, but keeping it without being too frustrated. It's hard, I saw everybody shaking up there. It, it's hard to not get frustrated because of past events, but I'm, I'm a believer, I think, I think we'll get this across the finish line, so that we don't ever have to worry about this again, even if we have to deal with another storm, God forbid, but that's about all I have to say for now, but is everyone in agreeance that we can direct staff to, to come up with some plan? You're really good in acronyms, maybe you can come up with an acronym for it. Because I don't want it to, it's kind of cheesy SOS, but you, you know what I meant, you know what I was trying to get at as far as cementing something that is a true public benefit, not just for us, but, you know, Fran's been here for five decades. Five decades from now, I, I hope I'm sitting out, out in that same seat, but talking about, here's what we did in two thousand twenty-five, to make sure that now our grandkids are going to that school.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, if we could have our tech IT person put up the last slide that Monica had up there, and then I would make a motion based upon that slide, because I thought that was a reasonable request to ask of the town, and I think we could move that appropriately, if you could find that slide, it was the last slide that Monica had.
No question, Jason.
Requesting the town manager and the town attorney to take some action, and I thought that was well worded and appropriate.
There you go.
Okay, so Mr. Mayor, I would move that, that the, that we do everything possible as a town to preserve, I'm sorry, to preserve the longevity of our school, and that we ask and direct our town manager and our town attorney to look into all possible options to ensure that the school district adheres to the ILA.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor, seconded by Council King. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify, but you know what, let's do a roll call vote, can we do a roll call vote? Vice Mayor, a vote?
Aye.
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Councilperson Satterick?
Aye.
Councilperson Woodson?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well, that motion carries unanimously.
Are we planning to do something then, we've been asked to set aside some time as a town at the, at the meeting on the 3rd? We're involved now because of this interlocal agreement, I believe we should be allowed separate time that would not detract from the parents or the ad hoc committee who wants to do a presentation, that we should be allowed to at least address the school board on, during their workshop regarding this issue.
Well, I guess that would be a question for Nancy, Nancy, if more than one council member was to attend, would that be something that we would have to notice?
We, we could notice it. It's the microphone, I'm not touching it. Amy can take care of that, providing notice to the public that more than one of you would be present and make, you know, comments and to that public meeting that the school board is having. I don't think that that would be illegal to do that. The other question I did have is, you do have a meeting on the 2nd. Do you want an update from Will and I as to, hopefully that report comes out tomorrow, and then we would be able to come back with some constructive comments. We could report to you on June the 2nd, and then you could give us further direction.
Yeah, I think that's important, I, I think I would, you know, time is of the essence, I would encourage you both to reach out as, even if we don't have it. They've, they've had a chance to read it now, and, and try to get a feel as to where they're at, based on.
Yes, and we've also amended our public records request to request any drafts. So even though it may not be the final report, we would have more information on where they're coming from.
Can we, have we asked what exactly the scope of work was?
We have not made a public records request for that, however, we did receive a copy of a scope of work, which appeared to be more orientated towards, let me, let me back up, the initial consultant, their scope of work was very broad. However, there is a second component to that, which was very narrow, that appeared to be tailored to the building itself, the rebuilding of it. We can provide a copy of what we have.
What I'm thinking here is if we have a scope of work, and then we get his report, we can see if he was directed to make that report the way it looks, or he went outside, outside the scope of work and did a report. I mean, I think it's crucial that we know what, what actually the purpose of this report was, and they be transparent about it. So we, we can then, once we get the report, say, okay, well, his scope of work was this, this is what he came up with.
I agree with you, we'll, we'll make that request.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Will?
Mr. Mayor, I acknowledge all, and we'll take forward those actions. If, if the council wants, I'll yield some of my time to Tracy Kohler, if you do want to hear any of her feedback on her time as principal.
Okay, if you're okay with it, I'm certainly okay with it. Tracy, no pressure.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. Town manager, I appreciate the opportunity to speak a little bit about my time as, as principal of the beach school. I think one other fact that we haven't discussed, or at least had the opportunity to celebrate, is the fact that we had an international grant from the Rotary Club. It's, it's a big deal, because Rotary Club, as you know, oh my God, now I'm getting nervous, and I never get nervous. That's crazy. The emotional aspect, I get it. The Rotary Club, as you know, is a, is a major civic service group, both in the United States and internationally, and, and most international grants go to third world countries, specifically water quality. Haiti has a large international Rotary grant, and through the help of the Rotary Club of Bonita Springs Sunset Program, I happen to be a former member of the Sunrise Program, but through the Sunset Program at Bonita Springs, we were able to secure nearly a two hundred thousand dollar grant that we awarded, and it's a big deal, because nobody gets those in the United States. And and through that grant, we were able to purchase the sunshades over our basketball courts that you see. Very thankful to that vendor that when they were damaged after Hurricane Ian, that he was able to come in and replace those as part of his in-kind donation back to the community. But most importantly, when we tout the water school marine environment program and, and their steam approach, the science, technology, engineering, arts and mathematics programs that we're able to attract students and families to at the beach school. The Rotary International Funds provided for field trip fees, for transportation fees to, like FGCU, to talk about a drop of water as it begins in the forest and goes all the way to the Gulf of Mexico. It talks about water quality and monitoring systems, our students were involved with that, a great partnership with the mound house, and all the professional learning that surrounds that piece. We had some great professional learning at the beginning of the school year with our staff to talk about how we approach things as a scientist. And that created some great educational opportunities for our students when they were in the classroom. It, it purchased our, our interactive sandbox, if you've ever seen that, it's, you have an overlay of a projector, and you move the sand around, and it creates kind of a topography, and then put your hand over it, and it simulates rain that falls, and it shows like water runoff. It created opportunity, opportunities for us to buy things like Ozobots and BeBots, which are little robots that you learn to program. And it really talks about that logical sequential engineer think that helps students go through the reiterative process of, of, you know, failing forwards. So you try something, you run it, it doesn't work, where do we go back, where do we collaborate? And fix the problem and, and push forth with our engineer think. So a lot of that equipment for our STEM school, for the playground, for professional learning, was part of an international Rotary grant, and I think it's important to acknowledge the Rotarians who helped make that, that grant come true for the school, and is a, is a great attractor for Fort Myers Beach Elementary.
Tracy, can you, I know there was several people that stepped up to help in other ways, residents of the island. If you want to touch on that as far, I mean, Rotary obviously was a tremendous, tremendous gift, but could you talk a little bit about some of the donations that you received from the school, or for the school from just residents?
Oh my goodness, so we, we would have people from the Arts Association, the Beach Kids Foundation, you name it. Any kind of foundation on the island has come forward with checks to support our STEM program, actually since day one, when I was able to take the, the role of principalship. And those funds would come, you know, focused on STEM, or focused on student supplies, focused on experiences for students where we could go out into the community. Hopefully, you've seen some of the pictures that have been posted through social media, our students are out in the community, our parents are volunteering to be part of those field trips. The current principal there is continuing all these great programs for the beach school. So our students are immersed in the environment, and through the continued donations, we're able to supplement those experiences for our students and continue to buy those supplies and things that are consumable items.
And you can choose to answer this if, if you wanted, I, I, since Will was nice enough to grant some time to allow you to talk to us. You, there was a lot of talk out there about some of the decisions that you had to make when you were still there as a principal, that I know were not very easy for you.
No, they weren't.
But they were done out of need. And could you just talk a little bit about what those needs were, and why you felt you needed to make those, those decisions? It's a hard question, you don't have to answer it if you don't want, I don't mean to.
No, it was, it was a really tough time.
Yeah.
So as our budgets came in, and we had to make some decisions to continue to make the school viable. Some personnel decisions had to be made, and they were tough. But we wanted to make sure we kept the school focused, and we kept the school able to operationalize. And so we, I had to make some tough decisions, and so I'm happy to say, and, and Monica had mentioned this as well, that individuals were able to continue employment with other schools within the district. We had some, some great people be able to move into the private sector and open up their own businesses and pursue their passions that way. But it was those hard decisions that needed to be made, so that the school budget would come into compliance with what was given to me at that moment, and we were able to make it work. Combining grade levels has been a challenge, but our, our staff is, is a seasoned staff. They come with a lot of skill sets and experiences that, that make it work. We're very fortunate to have the very best educators on the island, and, well, maybe. We're very fortunate to have the very best educators on the island, and, well, maybe off island at the moment, but within our island school, and they're, they're able to make that work. And I think one of the, the best things that came out of it was, in our combination in classrooms, students really get to see some, some models, right? Because if you're a kindergartner coming in, you're not really sure how to sit in your seat, and you're not really sure what, you kind of look around to your, to your fellow classmates, and you see others behaving in certain ways, interacting in certain ways, so they have those role models. And then our, our first graders have the opportunity to be those leaders in the classroom. So, you know, it's a give and take both ways. And so, yes, hard decisions were made, but our, our staff was up for the challenge, and I think they've done tremendously well.